Hello and welcome to another edition of Council Countdown. My name is Chloe G. and I am here with our Public Information Officer Hannah Nichols.
Thanks for having me Chloe, it's always a pleasure.
Of course, so we just wrapped up the Community Services and Land Use Committee meeting. That was at three o'clock and right now we are on standby to start our County Council meeting. So if you want to start by giving just a little bit of a recap of what we heard in the land, in the Community Services and Land Use Committee, that would be great.
Sure, at today's Community Services and Land Use Committee meeting, we were able to see council make a motion to move to, well, we saw the committee make a motion to move forward to council, excuse me, a letter of support for the Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust. They also approved an ordinance amendment for Beaufort County's Traffic Impact Analysis Study. And then they also approved the Volunteer Service Agreement for the Friends of Whitehall Park. So a lot of really great things happening in that meeting. And the, the meeting concluded with four properties coming forward from the Green Space Program. And all four of those properties have moved forward to County Council for consideration of due diligence.
So it sounds like a lot of approvals happening. I know it was a pretty quick meeting in comparison to other ones we've seen before, so.
It was, it was very to the point today. And we look forward to at five o'clock, we've got the County Council meeting. We begin all of those meetings with an Administrator's Report, a Citizen Comment Period, and Liaison and Committee Reports. And then tonight, we have four items on the Consent Agenda. And then after that, we'll see the third reading of the Ordinance for a Proposed Sales and Use Tax Referendum that if approved, will go on the ballot this November, so the citizens of Beaufort will have a say. And then we'll see the second reading of the County Budget Ordinance, as well as four agenda items relating to the conveyance of easements or properties, just those little details. And our final agenda item for tonight is the approval to accept the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for Beaufort County's Active Parks and Recreation Facilities. So that was a super quick overview, there's so many more details that I didn't share, and we would encourage everyone following along to go to beaufortcountysc.gov to check out agendas, packets, and minutes.
Yes, that is such a great resource, and if there's, you know, a topic that maybe you're interested in hearing in person, we invite everybody to come out to the council meetings that are on Mondays at five o'clock. You can see the full schedule on our website as well. But, we're going to be talking about some announcements that we have to make as a county. And that means it is, first off, hurricane season. We've been talking about it, but we are really starting to get down to the wire here as it began on June 1st and runs all the way through November 30th. But, here at Beaufort County, we are urging all residents to get prepared now before the storm hits. This is your opportunity to see what long-term preparations residents can make now that they, to make sure that they're finalized and ready should a storm head our way. And our first tip is to know your zone. And in South Carolina, state and local officials issue hurricane evacuation zones based on where you live and what, and the coastal counties. So we want everybody to know their hurricane evacuation zone instantly. You can do this with the SC Emergency Manager mobile app and hurricane dot S C, South Carolina's Online Hurricane Guide. Another tip we have is to prepare your home. Do a safety check to make sure your home is best able to withstand the effects of a hurricane, have your roof inspected, double-check hurricane shutters, and make sure your insurance policies cover the types of damages hurricanes can cause. Make a list and take photos of your belongings as records. Check your insurance policies to make sure that your policies cover everything that you need them to. Right now is a great time to do that. And the one other tip we have is to remember your route. Be aware of the closest hurricane evacuation route ahead of the upcoming season. This will allow for more efficient and safer route out of the hurricane's path, and you know it'll cut down on the traffic and the craziness if you already pre-know exactly what you're supposed to do. Once you've learned your route, stick with it, remember it, and rely on the blue hurricane evacuation signs that you will see along our roadways, not your GPS, because the signs in the route is 100% the best way to go and the most reliable in these situations, so.
Well, and I believe that if an evacuation or a lane reversal is mandated, it would be along those blue signed routes, not necessarily a GPS route.
Yes.
So thank you Chloe for those tips, that's a very critical, critical thing to be aware of now that it is the summer season, it's very hot, the ocean temperature is up, and we have been predicted to have a pretty active hurricane season this year. So thank you for those tips. An additional announcement, the Beaufort County Veterans Affairs Office is going to be closing for staff training tomorrow, June 11th through Wednesday, June 12th. The office is going to return to normal business hours on Thursday, June 13th. An Administrator will be answering the phone to set up appointments, but the office will be closed to the public for those two training days.
Yes, so anybody that needs anything at Veterans Affairs, just keep that in mind, and you don't want to make a trip out there if you don't have to. They are wanting to better their staff, so, another announcement. Beginning this week, Beaufort County Solid Waste and Recycling has implemented a new pilot program for electronic recycling. In addition to the quarterly scheduled e-waste events, the pilot program allows residents to drop off east e-waste items at personally convenient scheduled times. You can schedule your drop-off date online at beaufortcountysc.gov. Residents must schedule an appointment and can bring up to five items of residential e-waste. If you have questions about Beaufort County recycling events, please call the Solid Waste and Recycling Office at eight four three two five five two seven three six, or of course, you can always visit our website. This is a great addition to the already scheduled e-waste events, and it just gives everybody an opportunity to do this at, you know, a convenient time for them.
I love it. And I would say if some of these sound new to you viewers at home, and you're like, whoa, I didn't know that was happening, how do I find out about that? I would encourage you to sign up for our email newsletter list on our website. We send all of these announcements and releases out usually daily, sometimes multiple times a day, so it's the best way to make sure you are informed on all of the county happenings, and we would love to see you pop by. I'd also like to give, uh, take a moment to thank you for joining us here on BCTV, and give Chloe G. and our broadcast team a little bit of a shout-out. Chloe and Troy Matthews, another one of our talented staff members, just won two Telly Awards for Outstanding Work in the 45th Annual Telly Awards Competition. And we are so, so grateful to have their talents here on this channel. They do a wonderful job, as does the whole team of promoting engaging content for Beaufort County viewers. You can watch, you can watch these programs on cable channels Hard Gray Channel 9 and 417, Comcast Channel 2, Spectrum Channel 1304, and we also stream live on beaufortcounty.tv and through the free BCTV app on Roku, Apple TV, Android TV, and Amazon Fire, so there's a ton of options out there. Definitely watch Beaufort County TV, and we thank you for tuning in.
Yes, wherever you're watching us right now, continue to watch us, we have content coming at you all day, 24/7, every single day. So thank you so much for the shout-out Hannah, we really appreciate it. Another announcement, our Beaufort County Passive Parks Department has an exciting nature of schedule with birding, trail walks, and special events on the schedule. This week, you have two different opportunities to take it outside with a Bluffton Library Talk at 2:00 PM on Wednesday, and a Trail Talk at Wigeon Point at Thursday, on Thursday, at 9:30 AM. Contact Passive Parks Naturalists at destiny.renes@bcgov.net for more information, or you can visit beaufortcountysc.gov/passive-parks to see the whole program schedule for June.
And I would like to just say, all of those events and programs are free and open to the public, it's a wonderful way to pass some time with your family this summer. I've been to a number of Destiny's programs, and they are so much fun and also educational, so shout-out to that team for doing all that good work.
Yeah, so I'd like to make my way out for one of them, hopefully soon. So yeah, if you want to learn more about nature or all the different parks that we have to offer, we encourage everybody to go out and check these out. They are super fun and relaxing, and it's a nice way to get out and enjoy the weather.
Absolutely. We'd like to remind everyone, tomorrow is the statewide primary, Tuesday, June 11th. Polls are going to be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, so double-check your polling locations prior to going out, because some of them may have changed. You can check your voter registration and find your polling location by visiting scvotes.gov.
I know me personally, my polling location has changed, and I got a notice in the mail, so it is very important to double-check that before you head out to where you think you might need to be, so it should be very easy to find, and like you said, we encourage everyone to get out and vote.
It's the only opportunity you have to make your voice heard.
Yes, 100%. And, another announcement, the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources will be conducting their annual shellfish ground management oyster shell reseeding at several Beaufort County boat landings beginning this week, running through middle of June. The boat landings will remain open to the public, however, there will be increased truck and barge activity throughout each day while SC DNR reseeds the oyster beds at each location. The next two weeks of work will be completed at Eddings Point. For more information, like we've already mentioned, visit the news section at beaufortcountysc.gov.
For those of you who might just be tuning in, we'd like to thank you for joining us on today's Council Countdown. We are getting ready to start the County Council meeting today at 5:00 PM. My name's Hannah Nichols, Public Information Officer, joined today by Chloe G., who is our talented content specialist. We just wrapped up a Community Services and Land Use Committee meeting at 3:00, and we should be getting the council meeting underway right at 5:00. On the agenda tonight, we're going to start with our Administrator's Report, Citizen Comments, and Liaison and Committee Reports. After that, we've got four items on the Consent Agenda, and we've also got the third reading of the Ordinance for a Proposed Sales and Use Tax Referendum that if approved, will go on the ballot this November. Now, the notable thing about that item, Chloe, is that last week, at the Public Facilities and Safety Committee meeting, council altered the project list and the amounts. So the original that was being proposed was a 15-year, over a billion-dollar referendum. That has now been reduced to a $950 million referendum for 10 years. So some interesting changes always happening in County Council, it's always great to tune in and see what that might be.
Yes, and as you can see, we have just over, a little, a little over two minutes until that meeting starts. We've got a good crowd out here this evening, and yeah, so we are excited for everybody to get, have their chance to listen and see about the agendas.
Just a reminder, if you're following along at home, you can check out those agendas, packets, and minutes at beaufortcountysc.gov, and if you are interested in looking into the changes that I just mentioned to that referendum, it'll be there in that agenda packet.
Well, thank you so much, and tune, stick around for just a little bit, over a minute, and we will get our County Council meeting underway. Thank you for tuning in and being here with us.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the County Council meeting of Monday, June the 10th. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Tabernick?
Oh, present.
Councilmember Reitz?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, here.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Glover?
President, online.
Councilmember Dawson?
Here, online.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
She was here.
Is absent. Councilmember Bartholomew?
Here.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Here.
Chairman Passamit?
Here.
President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear wise and loving God, we thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for life itself and for the measure of health given us to fulfill our duties. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing serious responsibilities. I ask that we as a body promote peace, order, and justice, and that you graciously grant this assembled body the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, to have a sense of the true needs of our citizens, to have a keen thirst for justice, to understand and to clearly see what is good, fitting, and appropriate, to have the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and to have personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. Finally, please help us to ensure our deliberations here tonight benefit those who live and work in our extended community. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom and Information Act. Item number four is the approval of tonight's agenda, and before we do that, I'm going to ask a member of council to make an amendment to tonight's agenda. Under item number 11, which is the county budget for the fiscal year 2425, there are two typos that need to be changed. So it's important for us, because it is a very lengthy document, it is an ordinance, that we get those correct. So I'm going to ask our esteemed attorney to, or Mr. Robinson, if you will note what those two changes are so that we can have an individual make the motion to change those items.
Yes, sir. On your, in your backup material, on the section where it has the millage, at the bottom of the millage, the Ladies Island Fire District Millage, under expenditures, it's listed at $8,261,522. That number should be $8,351,522. So, one change there. And then, Section 14, under Roman numeral, Section 14, that Roman numeral is written incorrectly, so we will change the Roman numeral so it's correctly written, number 14. Is there anything else?
Okay.
That's it.
Will a member of council make a motion to have those two items changed?
I'll make the motion to change those two.
Ms. Tabernick makes the motion. A second, please.
Second.
Mr. McKellen makes the second. I was going to give it to somebody else, but I gave it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, duly motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, the changes will be made without objection, and I see no objections. Now I would like approval of the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the amended agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Before we go to the approval of the minutes, those of you who are in the audience, those of you who are watching, you will see that on tonight's agenda is a third reading of an ordinance for a Transportation Sales and Use Tax Referendum. We will not have the third reading. What we are going to do is introduce it as a third reading, but we're going to make amendments to that, so that you will see exactly what we're going to do. It will then be, become the second reading, and there will be a third reading with another public hearing. Okay, next, I need approval of the minutes for the special council meetings of April 29th and April 30th of 2024. and April 30th of 2024. A motion, please?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second?
Second.
Mr. Cunningham, you made the second? Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this item will be approved without objection. Next, we turn to our administrator for his report.
Good evening, council and chairman. Chairman and council, I said that backwards. As usual, it's a busy week, and last week was a very busy week in Beaufort County. Staff was continuing to prepare for, for our budget season coming up, as well as the many issues that come up through our, through our days and our weeks. I had the pleasure of attending a few important meetings last, meetings last week. Our county emerging leaders program hosted the women's conference on Friday afternoon. This was a well-attended event. We had some great speakers, some female leaders in lots of different industry. Chairman Passamit's wife was on video for a few minutes and talked about her experience leading a large organization. We had the retired Secretary of Transportation for the state of South Carolina. DOT Christie Hall came and spoke for a, for a good while about her experience coming up through engineering in a male-dominated industry and became the leader of that organization for the state. So it was really great to hear from her, as well as some other local leaders. We, we had Ms. Marilyn from the, she is the executive director of the Black Chamber of Commerce, and some of our own staff came to speak. So we had our assessor Ebony Sanders. Dale Butts was on part of the panel as well. Colonel Grant, Quandara Grant, is the director of our detention center, as well as Pam Cobb, and several others came to speak. All of them did a great job, and it was a really good event overall. I was, while I was there, distracted slightly because there's work to be done, but it was a really good event. I also got to leave that event and went to the legislative reception that afternoon. Several council members I saw there as well, and that was an opportunity for administrative staff and council members to get to meet and greet and talk with other administrators, council members, elected officials throughout, and various important folks throughout Beaufort County and throughout the state. So that was another great event. I would like to share three employee recognitions with you tonight. First is from our engineering department. This is Patty Wilson. Did I see Patty here already? There you are. Come on up. So Patty does a thankless job, but none, none, but very important job, and very difficult job. Patty is our right-of-way manager. So what that means is anytime we build a sidewalk, or a road, or pave a dirt road, whatever that is, the right-of-ways down both sides of those have to be procured properly. So we either have to, we have to figure out who owns them sometimes, we have to figure out how much they cost, we have to figure out, maybe we already own part of that, how much of that right-of-way needs, needs to be accepted, and for every parcel along both sides of a piece of property. So you can imagine if we're paving a mile of road, how many parcels that is that she has to do every bit of research for every single owner of every property. It's very detailed work, and if you get it wrong, what happens? We get a fine, we get yelled at, it's, you know, things go bad. So it's very important. So now to read what she does. She manages easements, right-of-ways for engineering and public works projects, property liaison for utilities, surveyors, consultants, and constituents. The utilities is a whole nother nightmare on its own. Above-ground utilities, utility easements, and buried utilities that sometimes folks don't even know are there. We find them later. So, some things about Patty. Patty served for, well, nine years in March, just over nine years she's worked for Beaufort County. She is a hiker. She's hiked sections of the Appalachian Trails. Her goal is to complete the entire 2,200 miles. She has currently completed about half of the trail and is making her way through Pennsylvania. When's your next trip?
July.
July. Would you like to stay out of the council?
Yeah, I, I want to thank council. I work with many of you in the process. You guys are very helpful when I have to get with your constituents, and I appreciate the help, and especially you two that are online. My job is challenging at times, and it's rewarding. Like you said, it's nothing like seeing your, you know, a paved road, knowing that you paved the way for that road. So it's ve, it's very rewarding, it's very challenging. Sometimes I'm probably the least liked person in Beaufort County. Miss Alice, isn't it? But, but I enjoy it, and I enjoy working with the council, I enjoy working with all the outside surveyors and contractors and other people that I work with, and the, and the citizens of Beaufort County. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I have a moment of personal privilege while she's taking a picture?
Go ahead.
I just want to say I thank Patty for all the work she's done. She's the, probably the most liked person on my part in the county, because she's helped me a lot on a lot of different projects. So I just want to say thank you, Patty.
All right. Now, the, the next person I'm going to introduce is pretty new. He's been here about six months. Hopefully, we don't have to use him. This is Matt Kraus. He is our new disaster recovery manager.
Oh, yeah.
Matt? Thanks for having me. Good to see you, Matt.
Yeah.
So, like I said, Matt's worked for us about six months. Matt is our disaster recovery manager, and what's that mean? He's the guy that makes all the plans for when we have a bad day, he's going to help us fix that bad day, whether, whether it is implementing our disaster recovery plans, our debris management strategy, working with public works and emergency response recovery plans for Beaufort County. So he coordinates all of this action within county departments, with our emergency management department, and with our other local municipalities and entities. In the off-season, Matt's doing paperwork and reading books and planning and going to classes, but when it's hurricane season, Matt's on high alert, because what he does is critical to the recovery of Beaufort County and all the citizens of Beaufort County. So it is very important and detailed work. So he works with disaster recovery information to make sure that citizens know what's going on, to disseminate that information properly throughout our various state and local organizations. So Matt is a graduate of Savannah State University's Homeland Security and Emergency Management Program. He led an successful IT career, and began, and then began to study emergency management after spending a week volunteering in New Orleans during the recovery from Hurricane Katrina. And we are pleased to have Matt work with us in work in discovery and disaster recovery. Matt, want to say a few words to council?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having me, council. It's, it's really great to meet all of you. Mr. Chairman, I know we had a chance to talk during that, that mayor's meeting and talk about some of your experiences during recovery. I got to say, I have absolutely loved my six months here with the county. Everybody's been very welcoming. I inherited an amazing program that my predecessor and now supervisor Pamela Cobb had put together, something that all of the different county directors that come together, this plan doesn't exist by itself, it's about people. And when it comes to recovery, that's what it's about. It's about people and trying to get us back to the new normal should anything bad ever happen to us. Working at Public Works has just been amazing. It's one big family over there. I couldn't be happier with my choice to come work for Beaufort County, so thank you for having me.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you gotta stand on your toes. All right. Also, from a, a closer-related department is Victoria Hoffman. Where's Victoria? There she is. Victoria's worked for Beaufort County for three years. She is the solid waste and recycling program manager. She's responsible for overseeing the county's compliance with all our local, state, and federal legislator for solid waste and recycling program, including helping the county reach its state-mandated waste diversion goals. She oversees the budget process for, for the selection of all capital equipment and project planning, and manages all related contracts for services provided to Beaufort County. She's recently leveraged a USDA grant for composting, which y'all approved a few weeks ago, like just $270,000 plus and some change, and, which will be a pilot program that'll be implemented soon. Victoria oversees educational campaigns, and to continue to better serve Beaufort County. Victoria used to live in Las Vegas. She was a, as a, she worked as a conservation biologist and liked to hike through the desert looking for Mojave desert tortoises. They don't bite?
They don't, but the Mojave green rattlesnakes did.
Oh, wouldn't like that. Don't like snakes much. I'm scared. She is an active member of the Junior Service League of Beaufort, and when she isn't volunteering or looking for tortoises, she enjoys spending time with her family in the creeks and on the beaches of Beaufort County. It's a great place to do that.
Yeah. Really honored to receive this recognition. Each day, so many people work in the county, so it's really nice to hear that thanks and congratulations. I really do like what I do. In the solid waste industry, we always say that we're just good at talking trash. I may be good at that, but I also feel like I bring a lot to the table. I'm really passionate about what I do and truly enjoy helping serve Beaufort County. So thank you for the recognition. Nothing further from me.
Those children are a lot of work. Mine are a lot older. I couldn't do that again. Thank you so much. Sir, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're at our first citizens' comment. In this first portion, we have three individuals who would like to address us about items on the agenda. The first one is Joe Mack, who would like to address us regarding the Parks and Rec master plan.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good afternoon and good evening, Chairman, County Council. I speak on behalf of Beaufort Trailblazers. Just to introduce myself, I raise in Beaufort, grew up in Beaufort, and I live in Beaufort, and I have a recreation business. Played four years tennis for Beaufort High School. In 2016, I went around on a bicycle to all the parks north of DeBrod and distributed a little thing what I had found in the parks, and it was pretty short, and, you know, they had this playground. I even went to the schools' parks, which they typically had a playground, running track. And the master plan, I remember the one from, the consultant from Colorado that did one from years ago, where we obviously advocate for mountain bike trails, and, you know, throughout the country, developers are, you know, there's a lot of development in the country, well, developers are building mountain bike trails, which every trail I've ever been on, they are, you can run, you can walk, you can mountain bike, so it's multi-use. The developers are seeing the value of it, and they put that, the same value as a tennis court, pickleball court, it's probably more valuable than the pavement, because, you know, everybody wants to go outside, it's in their DNA, and it's in, it's in, it's more nature than the pavement. As far as the history around Beaufort with the parks, you know, everybody has their cup of tea, so to speak, and some things got overlooked. You know, I would go play tennis, I would, I would go play 10, 15 tournaments a year. If you play enough, you might win a tournament. I've won a few, I won Anderson, I won Myrtle Beach, and I won Dalton Island. The best I did money-wise was, you know, I coached it, I was, I got certified, I played world-ranked players in the amateurs, but I was in this small town in Arkansas, and I won the first round, and if I won the second round, I would have got $250. Well, there was a small problem. The guy across the net was ranked 500-something in the world, and he was from Hawaii. We have such a vacuum here for sports. Is that some kind of ding-dong?
Yeah, you have 30 seconds.
Okay, so, a lot of people don't understand what mountain biking is. You know, Eric Greenway was on video, so he, he didn't understand what it was, because he was saying we want to move dirt, and I, I didn't know it was on the agenda at the Natural Resource Committee back, couple years back. That's, you know, there's all kinds of flavors. You don't, you can have a flat trail, you can have a hilly trail.
Okay, I need you to finish.
So, as far as the master plan, I just, I, I, I did read it this morning. I got up to page 60, and then I started skimming. I can finish this in one minute. Not too many people come down here and want to talk. So, the, I started skimming after page 60, I had to get on with the data. It's 132 pages, the master plan, it did say, I did notice two things that would be the highlights of what I, because I saw some other things too, but it was, a topic got number one more than once, fitness, fitness and something, I believe it was fitness and health. And then the other point I'd like to make was, I think it was, it was the 36 most important, and it might have been unmet, I don't know, I had to do this real quick, but the number 11 was unpaved hiking, walking, and biking trails, and number 24 was mountain bike trails. And to me, that's one and the same, but I know it's just a document, it's a resolution which just means kind of somewhat half, half intent, but, you know, you had, you had plenty of resolutions over the years that never took place, so they were more specific, but thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Mike Hagan regarding item number 10, which is our sales tax referendum.
Good evening. We came to you months ago with concerns over 5B and engineering. Of course, it evolved into the whole transportation sales tax referendum. You listened to us then, you just demonstrated leadership as a council and as individuals. You had the forums, you changed the format of the forums to make each one more productive than the last, and you really listened to everything we had to say. And I believe last Tuesday was a meeting of the Public Facilities Committee, and what you have before you tonight, I believe, is their recommendation, and while it may not be a perfect document, it's certainly one that we can live with, the people that I speak with in Rose Hill, and we appreciate all the work that's been done by the council. Listening is sometimes difficult, but you all did that. The chair demonstrated leadership, Logan demonstrated leadership in the meeting that he saw over, back last Tuesday, and Paula, our rep, was out in front as well. We thank you for what you've done with that. We'll see where it unfolds, but I think, you know, you deserve, you take enough heat, you deserve a, you know, compliment once and all. So, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ann Marie Ubelis?
Good evening. I stood before you months earlier and told you how bad this 2014 sales tax is as it stands. I come before you for public record so that the voting taxpayers will know just what a boondoggle it is. You want us to pay for projects we funded under 2018 sales tax. You claim the projects were underfunded. So I looked at nine projects encompassing Ladies Island Corridor in the 2018 referendum just before coming here. Of the nine projects, one is completed. One is listed under Phase 1 Construction and Phase 2 in Design. Three are in Design only. Three are on hold, and one that was in Design is now back on hold. It took eight years to get this far. Only one project completed, the cost of $30 million funded by 2018 tax, yet you want an additional fund of the nine projects at $60 million. I remind you, this is just Ladies Island Corridor. I shudder what to think of what I'd find if I dig deeper. So these projects were unfunded? Is that the taxpayer's fault, or is it the planners and sculptors of the 2018 referendum? Will you come back in 10 years? Will you come back in 10 years and tell us, oops, we made a mistake, we need more money and another sales tax? If you chain a dog to a tree and slowly over time remove the links, towards the end, the dog accepts it as normal restrictions. This is what you're doing to us. 25 years ago, the sales tax was 4%. Clip, there goes a link. We accept 6% as the new normal. Clip, clip, now it's 8%. But wait, the tax sunsets. We drop down to seven, but we use a replacement tax. What you have done is trained us to the new normal. You made it generational, say 15 years. Oh, wait a minute, no, too much too soon, so let's train them, and it's 10 years. What's next? 10%, 20%, 39% tax like Europe? Transportation tax, green space tax, hospitality tax, capital improvement tax, what's next? And you ask us to trust you? How? When there are nine ethics violations under investigation in this county's administration for misappropriation of funds and malfeasance? What else? What you need to do is learn to earn our trust. Reduce the 2024 referendum. Remove the two slush funds. List only imperative and immediate projects. Reducing it from 1.65 billion to 950 million is a start, but it's not enough. Reduce them further to well below 10 years non-renewable. Finally, clean your house with transparency to the public, and we are watching. Thank you.
Okay, we will, um, end the first comment section and move on to our liaison and committee reports. Members, um, want to do reports? Ms. Howard?
I only have one. Port Royal Met for their workshop on June 5th. They are designing a new plan for Paris Avenue, uh, with, uh, perhaps more parking spaces and, uh, looking at how to have a right-of-way, which they already have, but would use some of that right-of-way for more parking spaces. And they, uh, they interviewed people for their short-term rental task force, 'cause they are trying to get their arms around that, and, uh, talked about perhaps revisions to their, uh, tree ordinance too. Thank you.
Okay, any others?
I have one. Very briefly, Palmetto Breeze, I was at that board meeting about a week ago, and, uh, from that, I struck out to Tom Davis, Senator Davis's staff, and we're working on, um, ways to position ourselves to get more grants that would help transportation, which we, um, we'll find out how we can do that. Secondly, I attended, um, that women's conference on Friday. I had no idea what to expect, um, and I, and I will tell you that, um, I was pleasantly shocked by the speakers, the agenda. I thought I'd go for a couple hours and, you know, duck out and leave. I've got to tell you, I stayed the entire day, and these speakers and you, they were introduced before, and it was so fun that one of our speakers, Jared over there, gave us a, a super ball to play with, but he actually had, um, a concept of this, um, the butterfly effect. Jared, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you take a half a second and share with us? I mean, I think this brought home a lot of things for what we're trying to do as a council. Would you do that, or is that asking too much? Mr. Chairman, too much?
Uh, it actually is.
All right, fine, but listen, I will say this. I've been, we just, about four of us up here finished our first year, January 3rd, and there were about 13 or 14 tables, about 100-some people there. There was about three tables I didn't know somebody. In a year, we're trying to work together, come together for the people, and we keep on hearing, we keep on listening, and, and, you know, I'm proud to be on this council. We don't agree on everything, and we're not going to agree on everything, but I think you have an incredible staff of people that's working together, that will come together, together. I think July 1st, with our new county manager coming in, um, I think you're going to be proud of that as well and how we work together, so I was glad to be there. And, uh, Carol, how do I say her last name? Pereira? Is that how I say her last name?
Is she here, Mike Morris?
Uh, not yet, but July 1st. But Carol, I was hap, last couple of weeks ago, I was in the hallway, and I heard her speaking about this women's conference, and I said, what the heck can that be about? And coming from New York, um, I invited myself, I said, can I get to that? And let me tell you a story. I'm glad I did, because we learned a lot, and there's a lot we can do in the future, and I appreciate being there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
I was surprised, too.
Yeah, me too.
I'm so glad to surprise you all, but no, I don't have.
Wow, before you change your mind, I'm going to move on. Okay.
Thank you so much.
I would ask a member of council now to make a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Tabernick makes the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Uh, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this, uh, item will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 10, I would ask a member of council to make a motion for the third reading of an ordinance for a 2024 transportation, sales, and use tax referendum.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. A second, please.
I'll second it.
Ms. Tabernick makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. As I said at the beginning, we are now going to make some changes. So, the first change I'm going to ask is for a member of council to make an amendment to this ordinance for the change from the original 15 years and 1.625 billion to modify it to a 10-year, $950 million referendum.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes that motion. Mr. McKellen makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Next, I would ask a member of council to take and make a motion to include in the referendum those projects as they were discussed at the special meeting of the committee, uh, indicating the projects with the projected amount of money that indicates $950 million.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes that motion.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the second. It is duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
The only thing I want to make clear is that when we get to the reading, I'm going to vote no for that as well.
I understand.
We'll get to that point, okay.
Okay. Um, any other discussion? This will be approved without objection. Next, in the, um, ordinance, uh, I'm sorry, in the, the description of the projects, each and every one of the municipalities, Hilton Head, Bluffton, north of the Broad, has been given a specific sum of money. First, I would ask a member of council to make an amendment to indicate that the $30 million money set aside for the Bluffton projects will exclude 5B as defined as the Buck Island to Buck Walter Parkway as the 5B extension that is being eliminated.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes that motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Tabernick makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, that will be approved without objection. Next, I would ask a member of council to make a motion on the Hilton Head projects, the $30 million, that it will include in the $30 million, the sea pine cycle, the sea pines circle improvements. Mr. McKellen makes that motion.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Therefore, we now have, uh, something that I need to recite, um, because when a substantive modification or amendment to an ordinance is proposed after second reading, the chairman shall remand the ordinance for an additional reading. Based upon that section of our rules and procedures, I am going to remand this back to County Council for a second reading and then a third reading of the ordinance. That does not require a motion or second. Under my authority as the chairman, I get to do that and remand that.
There are two other changes, I think, or at least one you want to address, and then a typo as well, Chairman.
Yes, please. We want to get this right.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, the third reading will be at a later date.
Yes, it will. Yes, the sec, the second reading will be at the next county meeting, and the third reading will be at a later date, and we'll inform everybody of that. Yes, Chairman?
Um, so you, you addressed the, uh, the change from 1.6 billion to 950 million?
Correct.
There also was a reduction, the amount of the, the bonds that could be issued?
Yes.
To 515 million?
Correct.
So, that could be part of?
I'm sorry, yes. And that would be part and parcel of the changes that we have to make.
Yes, sir.
Do we need a motion for that?
Uh, it could, it, it really is part of what y'all just did, so I would just include it in, in either an additional or amend what was just done to, to include that reduction as well.
Okay, all right.
I'll make that motion to amend it to include that amount to reduce the bond from the stated amount to the newly stated amount.
Mr. McKellen made that motion?
I'll second again.
Mr. Cunningham made a second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Mr. Kevney?
I think there was one typo or one more change. It's on page 49 at the back, in section 2.6, and that is to terminate, the date of termination of the referendum.
Oh, yes, it's, right, it was 40.
Right, I, I, that will get caught up in the reduction from the 15 years to the 10 years, but in one place, it specifically addressed what the final term of, of the tax would be, so it, because of the reduction from 15 years to 10 years, it drops it from 2040 to 2035 to line up with the 10-year collection period.
Chairman, just as a, a point of clarification, what's the effective date of this, uh, to take place?
May 1st.
May 1st?
Yes, sir.
And the, uh, Green Space Committee collections will be ending what date this year?
December 31st.
I think it's just, at the latest. Yeah.
It doesn't meet the threshold before.
Right, so the latest would be December 30th.
So, that 1% will be gone, uh, if, uh, and then if this 1% passes.
Yes, sir.
So, it won't be a 2%. It'll be 1%.
Right, there'll be a four-month period. Yes, sir, there'll be a four-month period with, with neither in effect.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So, now we have, uh, it will be discussed at the council meeting of the 24th. You will have all of that information. We will hold, um, the second reading there. We will hold the third reading a few days after that to make it the third reading and the approval of the sales tax referendum to be presented to the voters.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, when are you going to do the second and the third reading as, well, so after, I believe, under your rules, after council adopts these changes to, these amendments?
That's right, we can do it on, all on the 24th.
Well, I think you need, I think, you want to, um, um, get a motion to approve these amendments to the ordinance, um, get it approved, or a thumbs up or thumbs down, and then you, you have, under our rules and procedures, um, the obligation to remand it back for one more reading on the 20, whatever that is, 24th, 24th?
Well, we're doing it the 24th or the 27th?
We have, I mean.
Because we're going to have it as a third reading with a public hearing.
Well, you can't, yeah, we're going to have the third reading on the, the 24th, and you can't have second and third readings with, they have to be within seven, you have to allow it, I think it's seven days, isn't it? Under the U.S. statute, yeah.
Right.
So, I think you want to get it approved this time?
Yes.
As amended, and then read it on the 24th?
Right, so then, yes, so then this becomes the second reading.
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, sir. Sarah, when we have the second and third reading again, can you get, uh, a published bucket list so that it can be up on the screen when we're talking about it? I don't need it tonight, could I connect?
There is one that Jared provided. He said, share once y'all have finished, so I could share.
Okay.
Can you do second reading?
All right, uh, yeah, there, there it is. So, this becomes, um, the second reading, Mr. Kevney?
Yes.
Okay, so now, I'm going to ask for a motion and second to approve on second reading, approve tonight, the changes that were made by, uh, Mr. Cunningham, uh, Mr. McKellen has the first for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 changes that we have made.
Right.
Oh, we haven't made, we have a motion, is it not included? The first motion that Tab made was to include, I mean, the first.
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we made a series of motions.
So, you need a motion to open up second reading?
You, no.
A motion to approve the ordinance as amended by these motions that just, were just approved.
Okay, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay.
Listed as second reading for today.
Okay, Mr. Cunningham makes that motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. McKellen makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. But he understands the changes we have made, what we have included, what we have done, uh, and now we're going to remand this back for a one final reading of County Council.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we still up for second reading today for discussion?
We can.
And then, if this gets approved, then it goes on to third reading?
Yeah.
Which will be a public hearing.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Now would be the time for you to discuss anything you want.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, for those of you that didn't see the meeting on Tuesday, we originally were supposed to have that meeting a week prior, but we wanted to spend more time talking about it. If any of you get the chance to go back and watch that meeting, to see County Council go back and forth and discuss where we need to put these monies in these projects, and actually see that the very first thing that we tasked after we listed how many years to know how much money we were actually talking about was the existing projects that were not finished in the other referendum in 2018. Um, there's also a presentation in there done by Jared that shows the amount of inflation that occurred over those years, um, with also the discussion about how many years it takes to raise that money before you can start a project. Um, and we've identified that again out here. You'll see that we also gave buffers on some of these to include possible inflation that could continue, so we don't run into the same problem. Um, one of the big things that I wanted to address across the board was, this is a county-wide referendum, and to be a county-wide referendum, it needs to touch all of Beaufort County. Um, Mr. Dawson was very adamant about making sure his dirt road paving, um, and resurfacing was heavily included, which is something we accomplished. Um, Ms. Howard was big on resiliency and emergency evacuation, which we were able to fund, um, fund and also accomplish. You'll see that two of the big projects that were added on to this were the Triangle, where we actually made sure we had a buffer in that funding to complete that project, which the Triangle is the 170 area, um, as well as we focused on SC 46 improvements that, um, need to be done down there. Those are two big roads that we know that get people in and out of work all across Beaufort County. Then you had, uh, Mr. Dawson and Mr. McKellen were very big about the existing projects, 278 corridor, Ladies Island corridor, and then the remaining pathways that we originally intended to complete, um, and, and did not under the first referendum. I can tell you, the money is still there from the original referendum and is going towards these projects still. Legally, they are still in those pots, ready to go towards those projects, and that is our goal, is to not move them out of that, is to finish funding those projects to get them done. So, to say taxpayers' dollars were wasted, they were not spent anywhere else, they are still there, and they're still going towards those projects for Beaufort County. Um, I do want to commend the rest of County Council. That meeting definitely got a little heated for a while, trying to get this done, um, but we were able to iron this out, to come up with the biggest thing for Beaufort County, um, and came up with great transparent negotiations in front of everybody. So, that's the way I see this county should be run, and frankly, you know, the country across the South. It's a public conversation. You see very clearly what all of our intentions were. I was adamant about no 5B, and they supported me on that, and so on and so on across everybody else's. So, I just want to give you guys a round of applause. Thank you for coming on Tuesday to that special call meeting to get this done, and, uh, hopefully we can continue to tweak what we need to tweak and get this out to the voters, 'cause ultimately it's their decision where we go about this. Um, and to touch on Mr. McKellen's point, it is, so, to be clear, we only have a 1% sales tax in Beaufort, Beaufort County. The other six is the state. That is not us in Beaufort County. Um, and there is actually a four-month gap where it will drop down to six, which is the state minimum, um, up before it goes back to seven, which we are currently at and have been at for about the last 11 years. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Yes?
Very briefly, I have to second what
Very briefly, I have to second what Logan was talking about here with these, with my colleagues, the way we went back and forth. And I give you all a lot of credit for that. I, however, represent a group of people and I heard from a lot of people on this, some for it, obviously, especially the Seapines group. I heard them loud and clear, but by and large, the majority of people in these inflationary times are telling me this is not the time, regardless of what you heard last week. The facts are, a ton of people have reached out to us and a lot of my constituents say this is not the time. So I'm going to be voting, since this is a second reading, which I just learned, I will be voting no for that. And this is part of what I want to say about how we work together. We listen to the people, we come together, we make our votes and we move on to the next topic. But we do it on behalf of the people. So again, that's going to be my vote tonight.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Go ahead, Mr. Bartholomew.
Logan, I thank you all for having that special call meeting and I apologize I couldn't make it. I was in court down in Bluffton. You know, I was in a, I'm in a hard situation with the Ladies Island with the 2018 referendum. And, you know, before I came on county council, I was angry about that referendum too. But learning more about the projects and the path forward that needed, you know, the planning and the development of those projects, it gave me a better understanding and, but regardless, it was still a hard, hard concept to do the 15-year, 1.625 billion dollars. So I appreciate this body reducing that down to 10 years, 950 billion dollars, because these projects are still needed. At the end of the day, our county is growing, the infrastructure is aging. These projects have to be accomplished and funded somehow. And it's a sales tax or ad valorem tax, unfortunately, and I think the sales tax is probably the best way to go to minimize the impact to our actual residents here. I was going to vote no to the 15-year. After listening to my constituents, I don't think they were going to go for that. But the reduction, and I want to thank this body as well for upping the 40 million dollar allocation to 60 million for Ladies Island in order to complete those projects from the 2018 referendum, make sure that they're done and properly funded. So, thank you all.
Any others?
I'd like, I just want to comment that as I talk to people predominantly where I live, they are not concerned about the ill timing of it. They were concerned about 15 years, 1.62 billion. So we've we've talked about that. There is a misunderstanding out there that will be incumbent upon us to teach people. Everybody says, well, the government has the infrastructure. There's billions of dollars. Why aren't they doing the roads? The state has a 1-point-something billion-dollar surplus. Why aren't they paying for the roads? Why isn't CTC paying for the roads? Those are all different entities. And in the end, as Councilman Bartholomew said, it's either a sales tax or we have to raise the millage. I don't think people digress that we don't need the transportation done. It's just where are you going to get the funding? So I think we're going to have to do some education about federal, state, and local.
Let me just piggyback on some very good comments that have just recently been made as a fact that, you know, I've lived here for now 34 years and we all know what's coming and what's happening in the future when it comes to infrastructure. So as Tab just said, so where does that money come from? It then either comes from us raising taxes or from a sales tax. And talking to my constituents, I would much rather pay the sales tax because then all the tourists that come here can help us pay those taxes. It's not just the burden that's put upon people that that own property through their, through their taxes they have to pay. So again, this is a way that we can fund what we absolute, everybody knows we have coming, that we need to have happen. And then the second part that I'd like to mention is is the 5B. Again, the council heard what was said from the people that were there, 5B, and as I mentioned whenever you all came in before, is to keep an open mind. And I say that because I remember when people did not want the Bluffton Parkway, they didn't want the crossover, the flyover for 278. There's lots of things that that we have had to do in the in the past, widening 278, again, people that that said we didn't need it. But as things move forward and more studies are done, again, something that just let people keep their mind open, that might be something that's necessary. But again, this council voted at this point not to spend any money on 5B. But again, I just want to keep, keep people realizing that we need to look to the future and not have the gridlock that you see when you go to places like Atlanta or other places that because they have not looked ahead to make those changes. So again, I appreciate everyone in council and for us to coming to this. I think it's the right thing. And I'm actually proud that that's a part of this and getting this done.
Any others? Okay, the ordinance will be approved without objection. Is there any objection?
If it's a second reading, I'm voting no.
On objection?
That's it.
Motion passes. Okay, we move on to item number 11. A motion for a second reading of an ordinance to make the appropriations for county government and special purpose districts for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, ending June 30, 2025, to levy taxes for the payment thereof, to adopt services and user fees, to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming into the county and other matters related thereto. May I have such a motion?
Don't move, sir.
Mr. McCullen makes the motion.
I'll make second.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the second duly motioned and seconded. Now, there are going to be a series of amendments that I'm going to ask council members to motion, second, discuss, and approve. The first one, I would like a member of council to make a motion to amend the budget ordinance to include the transfer of $2,678,062 from the general fund fund balance to the Department of Special Needs, better known as DSN.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. Mr. Lawson makes the second duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
And let me, let me just say, this this amount of money that we're putting in there was actually in last year's budget or close to it. This is just a Scribner's error that was left out of of the budget. So again, this is something that was part of last year's budget and needs to be part of this year's budget of required insurance for for DSN.
Okay, any other comments? This will be approved without objection. Are there any objections? Seeing none, amendment number one is approved. Amendment number two, I would ask a member of the council to move that we amend the budget ordinance to increase the solicitor's budget by $85,500 for a total budget appropriations of $1,785,472.50 by transferring the funds from the payroll contingency account to the solicitor's budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Tavernick makes the second duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Can I ask what the what the money is going to be used for?
It is going to be used for a program for, oh, gosh. Right on the tip of my tongue. Do you remember, David?
Well, we've talked about several different things. At this point in time, I think it's going to be used more for payroll and retention. But then in the future, we're also looking at hopefully expanding mental health in the multidisciplinary court and expanding that that role of that court.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I hope next year we'll have more details that we had to ask for separately this time. It would be appreciated so that we know exactly where the money is going.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, this will be approved without objection. Are there any objections? Seeing none, amendment number two is approved. Amendment number three, I would ask a member of council to move that we amend the budget ordinance to provide an additional $42,500 to Island Recreation of Hilton Head for a total appropriation of $50,000 by transfer of funds from the payroll contingency account.
So move, sir.
Mr. McCullen?
I'll second that.
And Mr. Reitz duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. That was a typo. So it, we're going to increase the appropriation by an additional 42,500 to bring the total appropriation for this year to 200.
To 200,000.
I apologize.
Okay, Mr. McCullen and Mr. Reitz, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a comment. So I commented before and over the weekend I looked again at all the documents. The budget submitted by the director of the Island Rec Center notes that they received 135,000 from the county last year for the pool. In reality, they received 145. He also put in the budget this year 150,000 from the county. So his budget balanced at 150,000. So then I looked back, his budget has increased 8.7%. So I'm unclear why he would ask, they would ask for a 34% increase when their budget increased 8.7%. And I did share that with my colleagues from Hilton Head Island. I've seen nothing different. I scrubbed the budget several times, so I put that on the table.
Okay, I have a comment. You're going to have some? Okay. Very simply, I've gone over this now five or six times and I'm happy to do it again. We've also had presentations from the people from the pool who were here. And this is an important operation on Hilton Head. There are thousands of visits to the Island Recreation Center annually by Beaufort County residents. It's a private and public partnership. There are no Beaufort County recreational facilities on Hilton Head. This is used by Hilton Head and residents of the surrounding communities in Beaufort County. The money supports the entire aquatic program for people of all ages, from elementary school to senior citizens. The money pays for the lifeguards, for pool chemicals, and for scholarships for children in summer camp when school is out and single or both parents are working and children have nowhere to go. This is a small portion of their overall budget of 3 to 4 million dollars a year that's assembled by grants, fundraisers, donut sales, car washes, and the generosity generosity of local and county government. In fact, the town of Hilton Head donates over a million dollars a year to this facility so that the people who live there and in the surrounding area have the enjoyment of it available to them for the thousands of visits a year that take place. And finally, the reason for this request is they anticipate thousands of additional visits during the summer because the pool in Bluffton, that is a county pool, will be closed this summer. Now, that sounds counterintuitive to close a pool in the summer, but there are serious problems with that pool that will cause it to be closed. And some say that it could be closed for six to nine months. So I think that there'll be an expectation of more people visiting seeking relief at the pool that the Island Rec provides. And I think that this is money well spent. I don't think it's out of line and I support their request for it. And I hope that we can come together and give them that money for the upcoming season.
Any other comments?
Please.
Mr. Reitz?
Thank you. First, I want to say to Tab, I appreciate her efforts on the budget. I mean, long overdue and thank you. But I can't stress enough how, what Larry said. These folks accept unincorporated, we're incorporated Hilton Head and they have many families from unincorporated parts of Beaufort that come in and they provide scholarships to those kids that can't afford it. Secondly, I believe we're looking at Island Rec as not just somewhere to go, but a partner of us, us. We're going to look at things up north of the Broad to create opportunities like that. And they're going to be able to help us and share with us how to do that, avoid the pitfalls and spending extra money that we don't need to spend on creating other facilities and streamline it. So again, I think they've been honest brokers. They've come before us many times, presented their data. And to me, I think I go to something that Mark Lawson said last week, we underfund this Island Rec. So, and I appreciate that, but, you know, I want to thank you all for your support on this and it's incorporated and unincorporated use. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard?
I had asked at the last meeting for how many, knowing that the Bluffton Pool is going to be closed, and this is the closest one, estimated that there's 1,500 visits a month at the Bluffton Pool. We know that the children that are in second grade, I think, in Beaufort County school system all take swimming lessons. So probably while this pool in Bluffton's closed, they'll be using the one on Hilton Head. The only issue I have is the term scholarships for parents who can't afford it. The YMCA offers scholarships for parents during the summer. So why would the county fund a nonprofit scholarships for camp during the summer unless they go through existing programs that we have? So I would propose that 150,000 be given this year and then look at it again next year. Granted that, I have no problem that we need to give them money because the Bluffton Pool is closed. I have no problem with that at all. But using county money for camp scholarships, I'm not sure that's exactly for a nonprofit when there's other nonprofits that have summer programs for children that are funded through other community donations throughout the camp.
I think, Alice, that you're correct, but I think you have to realize that everybody who goes there pays a fee. And this helps to reduce the fee for the people who are in a situation who may not be able to afford it. So it's not giving a full, it's not giving someone a free ride. Everybody who uses that facility, as they do with the county facilities, pays a fee. But this eases the pain somewhat for people who-
I would want to be assured that the camp scholarships are not being paid with county money when we don't offer that to other people.
And we're not going to know that before we make a decision tonight.
That's why I'd like to reduce it.
So, are you making a motion to amend the motion?
Yes, I would like to reduce it to 150,000.
Okay. We need a second.
Okay, I'll second it, then I'm going to talk.
Ms. Howard made the motion. Ms. Tavernick made the second. Now, the total appropriation is going to go from 200,000 to 150,000?
That's what I-
Which is what they have now?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we can make an amendment on amendment that hasn't been passed.
No, no, you can amend. Yeah, you just take them in the order. So in essence, what you're saying is not to fund it because it's funded at 150 right now.
Right.
Funded at 157.5 right now.
Okay, 1, I will change it to 157.5, that's what's fine.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just confused. Wouldn't that just be denying the motion?
Isn't that just, isn't that just voting against the motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so-
We don't have to do that.
No, she has a right to make that motion.
I was just, I was giving my-
The motion was made, seconded. Any further discussion on this? Mr. Lawson?
And this ties to both, but, you know, as I mentioned previously, Hilton Head Island Rec Center has done a great job over the years and they have stepped in to provide services. And yes, they get funding from Hilton Head, they do fundraisers. However, if for some reason that nonprofit went away and there was no one there, Island Rec Center, to provide, we as a county would be obligated to provide the same services that we are giving now in Bluffton, in Beaufort, in Port Royal, to the town of Hilton Head. And it would be a whole bunch more than the 200,000 that we're talking about. So again, they're they're doing a phenomenal job. They have come to us for money that is needed. And even though they get lots of money from Hilton Head, again, as I said the other day, we as a county have not funded them their fair share when you look at what we're spending for the exact same services in the rest of the county. So I would, I would vote against this amendment and then we'll see what happens when the, when the previous motion comes up.
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Is the motion that Mrs. Howard just made really germane to the main motion?
Yes, it is.
You think it is germane, okay?
Yes, it is. She has every right to amend the amount of money that is being proposed. The increase was 42.5 to 200,000. She is in essence saying she doesn't want the 42.5, bringing it back to what they're being paid now. So it is germane. Mr. Cunningham?
Oh, yeah, I've said for months now, I'm tired of Beaufort County and carrying the load and being the only ones funding something. But this is an example of Hilton Head and bravo to their town council for doing it, funding something that they believe in. So I got onto them about the green space referendum, the green space purchasing property on Hilton Head, about Hilton Head not putting in their fair share. But this is them putting in their fair share, if they're putting in a million dollars a year. Us putting in 200,000, honestly, it costs us less money to do that than it does to go build a center on Hilton Head and continually fund it and then take on the payroll as well and the retirement and so on and so on. So- So I have no problem with the two hundred thousand. I wouldn't support anything less than that. They do a great job on the island. Heck, that's been there since I was a kid. I went there as a child for years before that, and my kids that I taught go to that exact same program. So they do a fantastic job before school, after school, and during the summer.
Okay, let's take a vote. Do I need to call the roll?
Yes, I think so.
Do you want to repeat the motions or?
The motion is to have the amount of money paid to the Island Rec remain at the hundred and fifty-seven-five that is being paid right now.
As opposed to two hundred thousand.
Correct. Okay. Do I need to call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you call the roll, please? Ms. Howard was first, and then Ms. Tavernick.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Glover?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Vice Chair McKellen?
No.
Chairman Passamet?
No.
The motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion again to remove it, to move it up to two hundred thousand dollars.
It is already at two hundred thousand dollars. This was a motion to amend the motion for two hundred thousand dollars. We don't need to do that. So we're back at the original motion. Yeah. Mr. McKellen, Mr. Reitz made the motion to go an additional forty-two-five to the two hundred thousand. Is there any discussion? Again, seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson? Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Chairman Passamet?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. I would ask for a motion for item number four, that we amend the budget ordinance by deleting section ten as it is currently written, and by substituting in its place sections ten and eleven as they appear in the redline version of the budget ordinance, as it appears in today's backup and marked as proposed.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tavernick? Second.
I'll make the second.
Mr. Lawson, duly motioned and seconded. Does everybody understand what that means?
Can she put it up there, please, Mr. Chairman? It's page seventy. Just to make sure the.
Yeah.
Is that in the agenda?
Yes, in the packet. And it's blue line for easy reading. You gotta scroll a little bit, yeah. Should make a bigger.
No, it's right there on the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, does everybody have a chance to read that?
And on page seventy-one, these are, these two paragraphs are literally cut and paste from your FY twenty-four budget?
Yes.
With one change, and that is at the end of the first paragraph on page seventy-one, we included a requirement for a monthly report showing the transfers pursuant to your request for that.
Correct. Okay.
Mr.? I'll have to you. I was gonna ask, I know there's some issues with the original language, but I did like the fact that it provided some checks and balances. Do you think that report is gonna be enough to provide the checks and balances or oversight?
It is going to be a start.
Okay.
Because my question is, is this across all departments and elected officials?
Correct.
They all play, are playing by the exact same rules?
Yes, they are.
So, Mr. Chair, my question was, in that top paragraph there?
Yeah.
We say county administrator or CFO or their designee. Do we really want a designee? Don't we want the CFO and the administrator to be held accountable?
That is going to be determined by our new county administrator because the language allows flexibility there.
Well, it does, but I question that, and where did we get to one hundred and fifty thousand up to?
That's in our original.
It was fifty.
Yeah, that's, that was taken out. The original was one fifty.
The fifty thousand was in the proposed ordinance that came forward. That hundred and fifty thousand was last year's approved ordinance.
That's a pretty high limit.
The hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the, is the limit, is the typical limit for the county administrator. After that, it comes forward to committee, up to two hundred thousand dollars, and then beyond that, it comes to council. But it, it doesn't eliminate the responsibility of the administrator to report those transfers to council.
Okay, everybody understand? Any other questions?
I do have one more. So, Tom, if you don't mind, hate to put you on the spot, but what was the rationale for the fifty thousand versus this hundred and fifty thousand? In the original language, I think it had a fifty thousand dollar kind of discretion there. So we, it feels like we had intended to reduce that down at one point to take some of that discretion away.
Yeah.
Why are we back up to the hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, so the language that was originally proposed, that is stricken through, as you see there, that was language that was worked on with the legal department and the then CFO. So we would have relied on the numbers from administration. And I don't really know what that was, but that's what we did. So we didn't, we didn't make those up. We got those from the finance department, so.
Well, the one fifty.
So the internal, the fifty thousand dollar number, where, where we, where it was before, that fifty thousand dollar number could be done by the, or could be approved by the CFO and the procurement office. So if we were going to ask elected officials to come and ask for committee and council permission to transfer funds, there would be that same responsibility for administration to opt, to ask the same thing. So that's where that limit came from. We are now back to the 2024 limit, just like it was. The only change is that requirement to monthly report. So a lot of these transfers, or some transfers, will be after the fact. You can't report anything till it's done. So that transfer will be reported out of, after the fact. So there'll be full transparency presented to council of the action that has been taken with public funds.
So they can or cannot move a hundred, up to a hundred and fifty grand without approval?
Sorry, what you said?
There's always approval.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. They, so they, they could, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, transfer funds. And they could do that, they can do that in the budget right now as it exists. Our 2024, FY 2024 budget, that is the same language. That's the same language that was in FY 2023 budget. It was different in FY 2022.
I still feel like we haven't come up with a solution here yet, though, Mr. Chairman. I know you said this is a start, but it sounds like it's not a start. We just did exactly what we did last year. It feels like we didn't change anything. I'm just being honest here.
No, and I, I understand that. What we don't have is the complete team. We don't have the county administrator in place. We don't have a CFO in place. We don't have a deputy in place. And to put these other items in place before they have a chance to evaluate and make suggested changes, think is the cart before the horse. My opinion.
And, and I, Mr. Chairman, I do understand that. One of the things, one of the lines in here that does bother me, it says, "The county administrator or the CFO is permitted," quote, "when it is in the best interest of the individual county departments or agencies." What, I mean, what does it mean to be in the best interest of? Like, who makes that determination?
Well, we are going to be getting a report monthly that is going to have the from, the to, and the reason. And it may be, we're gonna have a concern about the reason. We've never seen that report before. We are now going to see that report.
Should we expand the requirements in this ordinance, in that report, to literally break it down for what we want to see and?
Oh, no, they, they already know.
Okay.
There is a transfer form. What has been changed is the reporting we're going to get, because it's never been done before, and there is going to be a, for lack of a better term, an accounting of who requested the transfer, who made the transfer, who approved the transfer, and all the dates they did that.
And, and the justification for it.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, Tom, just for clarification, the way this is written currently, they can move something from furniture budget?
To personnel.
To personnel.
No.
They could.
As the way it is written currently, they can't.
They can't move it from.
They can't move it from it, but they can move it to it.
Within their own department.
Within their own department.
The one fifty provision refers to moving from one department to another or from one fund.
Right, but they can still move from line item A, whatever line item A is, as long as it's not employment, to move something else into employment. And then that could be their new baseline if they come back to us next, next year for their budget.
They could say that, but they've been, people raised this.
Correct, exactly where I'm going with this.
So among the discussions, among the discussions, when we began to talk about the transfer of funds, the question I posed then, what problem are we trying to solve? Do we have an abundance of these requests for transfers of funds? We do not. There is a risk that someone could ask for that, but there is an approval loop that has to, that has to go through for that. So were someone to request to move for, for, in, in your case, dollars from, from a furniture fund to personnel, that wouldn't make it through the first check in finance. It is not going anywhere. That's why we have a personnel contingency account. That would require us to go, staff, then to look at this and go back to HR. Did they, did this department who's asking for a transfer of funds have an open position? Did they fill that position legally? So it opens a lot of questions for staff to approve this. So while there could be some improvement in there, there is a, there is a process in place, as the chairman mentioned. We have a transfer of funds request, and it's very specific request form. If it's, if the budget ordinance is approved in this, well, there'll be an additional layer to that, which is, was it reported to council?
Any other questions? Okay, do we need to call?
Mr. Chairman, can I make one suggestion?
Yeah.
You indicated that you wanted to see the monthly report showing the transfer of the funds for each department, agency, and elected official, but you also, that's as it's written now, but you also indicated that you'd want to see the reasons for the transfer?
The transfer report, the, the, the way the transfer form is set up, all of that is there.
Very good.
So that's going to be the backup documentation.
All right, very good.
That we're going to get.
Any question? Is that transfer form, is that sworn, notarized statement?
No.
I think it should be.
The request form.
Yeah. Needs to be a sworn statement, I believe.
That's commonplace in the industry.
Well, it was abused, the process was abused before, and we need to make sure it's accountable now.
I, I think we're sending that message about the accountability now. Okay, would you call the roll on this, please?
Before you do that, would you just tell us again what we're voting on?
That right there. This is the paragraph that we're voting on.
Okay. Just want to be clear, that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Tavernick made the motion.
I have it, I'm just clearing the screen there.
Okay.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew? Vice Chair McKellen?
No.
Chairman Passamet?
Yes.
The motion passes, seven-three.
Okay. Item number five, amendment number five. I would ask a member of council to move that we amend the budget ordinance by amending section seven law enforcement uniform service fee to change the fees as they appear in the current version to the fees as they appear in the redline version, maybe blue line, of section seven as it appears in today's backup as Mark proposed. Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion. Second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Is there any other amendment that any council member wishes to make at this time? If so?
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yep.
Ask if we can have a discussion about another line item, like nursing?
You can make an amendment.
To?
We're not gonna have a discussion unless you make an amendment.
Well, I'd like to make a motion or amendment to have a quick discussion about nursing.
No, it's not a motion to have a discussion. It's a motion for a specific amount of money you want to place into this budget.
Oh.
And from where?
Has the last amendment passed that, when we just?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to make that motion to have money in this organization is asking for fifty thousand dollars for recurrent three years. Where that's gonna come from, you guys can help me with that. We can do that together right now.
Your motion is to place into the budget fifty thousand dollars for what?
South Carolina Nurse Retention Initiative, a program that was started in twenty-one as a pilot, and that we funded in twenty-three as a council.
I'll second that motion.
And, Tom, just for clarification, you're not asking to increase this budget allocation, right? You're asking for basically a dedication for recurring funding, is that correct?
Yes, David, I am, and also I want to add too, this is not an all or nothing ask. We could come up with something for these people just to keep them. This is one piece of the pie to help us solve our nursing problem. And if you give me the latitude in seven or eight minutes, I can show you a couple things as to why that's important.
We have a motion and second, we can have a discussion.
What's currently being funded on this program?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Mr. Chairman, I'm against this because there are programs already in place. I think the year we funded it, it was to be a pilot program only.
It was part of COVID.
It was because of COVID. There are other programs that now with the new nonprofit hospital and also the current nonprofit county hospital, they have programs for recruitment, retention, and training, and they're doing an extremely good job. I don't think we should be doing this separately.
Okay, I'm gonna go around the room.
Well, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I think we got into discussion before you got a second.
I seconded.
No, it's been seconded. Mr. Cunningham was the second.
Just want to have a little more fun and hang out with you, Tom.
Mr. Lawson.
If we're comments, I agree with Ms. Howard. I think that there are other programs out there. We have increased our funding to Beaufort Memorial Hospital. I think that at this time, I would vote against any additional funding for this program.
Ms. Tavernick?
I agree with Councilwoman Howard and Councilman Lawson. I wouldn't fund this program.
Mr. Cunningham?
No comment.
Mr. Bartholomew?
We are currently funding the, for 2025, right?
No.
We're not?
No.
We did not fund it last year. We stopped funding after 2022.
Thank you. Please read what's up on the screen. That's, I'll get there in a minute.
So this program was originally put in for COVID?
Yes.
Oh, were we voting or just talking?
No, no, you weren't commenting.
I'm I'm good right now, still thank you.
How much money are we dedicating to other programs like this for nursing retention? Anybody know?
We have money in for Beaufort Memorial Hospital, U S C B, and T C L for all of their nursing programs.
We have an idea of the amount?
Um, Beaufort Memorial's at the bottom.
We could get information on that.
I'm just wondering if we have an approximate dollar amount that someone could comment on from administration on how much we have already allocated in this budget for nurse retention.
Mr. McCollum, I can tell you it shows here that that we gave just T C L and the University of U S C B two point eight, so that's five point five million total between those two, and then Beaufort Memorial.
Beaufort Jasper.
That's not just nursing.
Yeah, no, it's not just nursing. And it's not nursing retention, it is for the education programs to have nurses.
So apparently this might be the only higher in retention program that exists because the others are educational programs to train and hire nurses, or am I wrong on that?
I would I would disagree with that statement because I I go to Beaufort Memorial Hospital board meetings and also Beaufort Jasper Health has programs for retention. They're all intertwined, retention, whether it's phlebotomists or nurse or C N A, they
So it's more than training, Alice, it's higher in retention.
Hiring and retention.
Okay, so do we have an idea, does anyone know how much we have in that?
I.
I'll stop asking the question if nobody knows.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I don't know the full amount. I do know that all three entities have put in significant resources to educate and retain nurses.
So if that number is important, do we have to vote on this tonight, or can we do it on a Monday?
No, we're we're doing the budget tonight.
Okay.
I would add to that a little bit, and frankly, I was probably going to vote no about a minute ago. Some of the shortness of staff in our hospitals and programs, without getting deep into it, was put on themselves by restrictions or demands to, I mean, we can get it to every one, some of them were required to take something they didn't have to acquire and were threatened by their job or left their job because of it. So some of those openings and vacancies were put on themselves, Beaufort Memorial itself.
I I think you're getting way into, I think Hank can maybe help with this answer.
Before Hank comes, we're going around.
This is a program that did not put it on themselves, but a program that was trying to solve the issue.
Mr. Reitz, you're going to be the last one. Mr. Glover, any comments?
Uh, no, I um, I do want to say that I think we have done a lot with nursing. I think we did it with through the ARPA funds. I've been told that Beaufort Memorial Hospital has been very pleased with their recruitment of nurses. So I'm kind of leery about shooting in the dark right now with this funding. Thank you.
Mr. Dawson?
No, I'm not going to support the the increase for support for the nursing programs.
Thank you. Mr. Reitz?
Thank you. Sarah, please go to the the third slide. Just, we'll go through this very quickly. First of all, this councilman is the least knowledgeable about this program, and I'm going to rely on Hank a little bit here in a minute to get everybody up to speed, but it was this council prior to us joining that, whether it was COVID that brought this program in or not, it was a program that was going to be looked upon by this council, and if they did what they were supposed to do, future funding was contingent upon the demonstration or impact on its citizens of Beaufort County, Memorial, Hilton Head Hospital. Sarah, the next slide, please. Just in the last two and a half years, the startup that started in twenty one, funded in twenty three with fifty thousand, they added forty nurses and they, at this point, they have thirty seven remaining. So this hiring of nurses is critical, and we'll get to that in a minute, and I'll show you that one, but ninety three percent of those ones hired have been retained through this program. So they're doing something a little bit different than the others, and I believe working in concert with Memorial and T C L and others is really the way, right way to go. Again, you can see that, next slide, please. Last week, I had the opportunity to take my wife, after a couple days of not feeling well, to the emergency room about one forty five in the morning Thursday night, and in that time, we met Tamika, who took care of all the paperwork for us. K J is a nurse, she wanted to be called K J. She stayed with us from start to end, and end was about five forty five in the morning. And then Sydney was the one that took care of the room at the E R that my wife had a band. Dr. Emily was the one looking over, making sure everything was going well, and Michelle was actually a traveling nurse from Tennessee, or from Charlotte, rather, and just loved being here and constantly busy. She left her family to be here to do this. It's that important. Sarah, go to the last slide, please. This one is really what I want to throw out before we get Hank up here. Every night at the Hilton Head Hospital, and I'm sure this is at other hospitals as well, there are ten to twenty patients that have to stay in the E R, and can anybody tell me why that's the case right now?
Not enough beds.
Okay.
Not enough staff.
All right, well.
No beds.
The point is, they have enough rooms upstairs to admit these patients, but they don't have the nursing staff to look after them. So this twenty four room capacity at Hilton Head acts as these rooms and these nurses down there take care of these as they would be admitted patients. That's ten to twenty every night. Some changes took place recently where tenant, it was bought out by Novant. These nurses tell me flat out that Novant is actually more into quality and care in the future. I heard from one of the nurses that they'll care for over six thousand patients a year. And as I said early on, this S C R N I is just one piece of this puzzle. So I I believe if this problem is at Hilton Head, is at Beaufort Memorial, and again, this is a hire, good quality nurses and try to retain them. This is a little bit separate from what T C L and others do. You know, I I think this is, by the way, I don't know if you know it, but Beaufort County on its own, and in particular Hilton Head, the population is aging like you wouldn't believe. I mean, we have just a ton of older people that we got to take care of, and I think this is just one way to do it, and this organizations ask is this, it's a nonprofit, they don't take any salary, they're asking for fifty, but I'm saying to you, to my colleagues, if it's not fifty, if we want to give them twenty or twenty, whatever it is, let's help them because one of the things I heard from one of the gentlemen was Beaufort County has such clout out there, if Beaufort County helps them, which we've done in twenty three, it's said, future money is contingent upon success, which we've done, we've, they've proved, Beaufort County provides a lot of clout for other people that may invest in this nurse type program. So again, I implore my colleagues to think about it.
Can I help you land this real quick?
Yes, certainly.
All right, um, we use ARPA funds last time to fund this for three years, is what it has listed here in our notes. Finance, correcting if I'm wrong, we moved a hundred and eighty thousand out of our payroll because it moved over to green space, and we used eighty five thousand of it towards the solicitor's office, so roughly.
Forty two.
So roughly, we have some, we have around ninety thousand dollars left of that money we're moving around. So I would venture to say, there is your fifty thousand, you said, team, could you help me find that fifty thousand? There's one way to find the fifty thousand from money we already moved last time. I actually see that by the stats, this program did work. This is an organization that is looking to make a positive impact. We could go around and around debating, Mr. Chairman, obviously, but I think that giving another year to this when we already found the funding without even trying seems like an option to continue to move the right direction for Beaufort County.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest that they apply, since they are a nonprofit, that they go through our program for five oh one C threes and apply for fifty thousand dollars if they're eligible. That, they're taking applications now, Audrey told us about that, and and have them apply for their program that way, instead of through our general budget.
Well.
Because it fits, and also I'd like to add that I don't think you have all the facts. I'd like to hear from Hank about the PATH program, because the PATH program is not just their program.
Well, the only thing I want to add to what Ms. Howard said, and I like that, is that it was this council that challenged this organization to do, take the fifty thousand we gave them, and let's see, let's see what you do, let's see what you prove. So again, Hank, would you want to step up and give us some thoughts? Oh, sorry, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
What do you have to add to this, Mr. Anderson?
I was just going to answer Mr. McCollum's question of how much money we spend on nursing programs. So we gave five hundred thousand dollars to ARPA funds to the hospital and U S C B to build a joint nursing training facility.
ARPA funds.
ARPA funds.
Not this, not this organization.
No, this is to Beaufort Memorial Hospital, you want to come to the microphone, can you hear me?
No, you're good. I was just reiterating that it was ARPA funds.
Five hundred thousand ARPA funds for that, and that is under construction currently, and that will be a joint between the college and the hospital. Second, seven hundred thousand dollars was for the PATH program, which integrates high school, T C L, U S C B, and the hospital, in not only training nurses, but also helping somebody on the path from being a room cleaner to be going to the clinical side that is already in the hospital, and helping somebody elevate themselves throughout the system. The nurse retention program is a backend stipend that is paid for the retention portion. Beaufort Memorial to Alice's question, answer, point was, they do have subsidies for rent or down payments and programs like that. This is about, the question, Bob Allen's program has been good, no, I'm not going to take a side, because all these are good efforts, it has a lot to do with inform Allen.
If I can add one more thing, then call a question afterwards, Mr. Chairman, that would help. To Alice's point that she said with the solicitor earlier, I would like for people to give us more information. I would like for people to request things the proper way, which is exactly what I wanted from the solicitor's office, which we just passed unanimously, even though we had questions about requesting in a certain way, we said we could wait until next year. So maybe next year they do apply for it through the five oh one C or whatever.
They could do it this year, they could do it this year.
And we could also fund it for them starting July first, if we approve it now, and it gives them time to for their, apply for their funding for next year. So I stand by my second to give them fifty thousand that Mr. Reitz put up.
Okay, call the question.
Question, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yes. While we, while we have this discussion about ARPA funds and moving funds around, I I want to remind council of my statement that I made a couple meetings ago, where we were talking about ARPA funds for broadband in Beaufort County. Those ARPA funds were designated by Eric Greenway, there was seven hundred thousand initiated for Councilman Glover's district, there was seven hundred thousand initiated for my district as far as broadband into the rural communities. As of today, I understand that there's only seven thousand dollars now for both of our district, and that was in the original distribution. So while we have these funds left on hand, I ask council to be mindful that I'm getting ready to start having Patrick Hill come out into my area of the county, start to have those conversations with the residents about expanding broadband into the rural communities, and God forbid, we run out of funds because the allocations were changed according to my, according to my knowledge.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Tabernick?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Council, Vice Chairman McGowan?
No.
Chairman Passment?
No.
The motion fails.
Is there any other amendment to the ordinance? Seeing none, I would now ask for a motion to pass the second reading of an ordinance to make the appropriations for the county government, including the five separate amendments that were passed.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tabernick made the motion?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover made the second, duly motioned and seconded, to now have the ordinance included in these five items. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Tabernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McGowan?
Yes.
Chairman Passment?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to item number twelve, which is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute the necessary documents to convey utility easement number nine zero four zero nine one encumbering property owned by Beaufort County. A motion and second, please.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard? Second, please.
Okay, I'll second it.
Ms. Tabernick, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item thirteen is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of drainage easements associated with the drainage systems located in Shellpoint area on parcels, R one hundred thirty three zero zero A, zero three five zero 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 zero, and R one hundred thirty three zero zero A, zero one sixteen four zeros. A motion and second, please.
I'd like to make that motion, and again, thank Patty for all her hard work.
Ms. Howard made the motion, a second, please.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover made the second, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Next is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of a portion of parcels of real property from Beaufort County to the city of Beaufort, associated with U S twenty one airport area and the frontage road improvements.
It's a move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bartholomew made the motion, a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Glover made the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Next is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the acceptance of properties encumbering the road right of way for private section of Shepler Lane.
I'm making the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard made the motion.
I'll make the second.
Mr. Bartholomew made the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objection. Item number sixteen is approval of a resolution adopting a parks and recreation master plan for Beaufort County's active parks and recreation facilities. Such a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the second.
Ms. Tabernick made the motion, Mr. Bartholomew made the second, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. We are now at citizen comments, and we do have four people who want to speak to us. As I call you up, please come forward. You have three minutes to address county council. First one, Cade Yarborough.
Thank you, Beaufort County Council, I'm Cade, Chair of the DeFuski Island Council. A lot has happened over the past week on DeFuski. First, we were shocked to receive an email from Mr. Robinson, a copy of which I provided you, stating that the two DeFuski infrastructure projects have been in the works for years are in big trouble. Mr. Robinson told us that there was no money in the budget for a long awaited bathrooms at the Bloody Point Beach, a major public health initiative. We were promised two years ago that there would be, that we would be one of the three communities to receive the one million dollar community building through the American Rescue Plan. Mr. Robinson said that he intended for the building to be based at the Melrose Landing, and the current condemnation proceedings make that impossible. When I reached out to Mark Lawson, he promised that he would look into the situation. The next day, he called me to say that the funding for the beach bathrooms was actually still in the budget under the ATAX program. He also said that he would oppose removing funding for our community building. The DeFuski Council is offering several good location options, including the county-owned Francis Jones Park area, and Mr. Lawson is aware of our efforts. We appreciate his advocacy on these important projects, and we urge the entire council to support his efforts on our behalf. Ms. Erin Quinn has been an active member of the DeFuski Healthcare Initiative, and will be speaking to you about more details about their efforts. Second, our challenges with the new ferry service continues. This was an extremely hot week for ferry riders, especially the elderly experienced, especially the elderly. They experienced miserable. They experienced miserable trips because of inadequate air conditioning system. A ferry rider took a photo of the thermometer showing that the inside temperature to be eighty-nine degrees, and the outside temperature to be ninety-six degrees. One resident described the situation as pick your poison. I'd like to remind everyone that the ferry contract calls for the climate-controlled vessels. On Friday, most of the DeFuski council members participated in a Zoom call with Neil Turner, the ferry operator, to share our concerns on about a dozen issues. Later this week, I'll send you a handout summarizing our discussion. We look forward to hearing back from Mr. Turner as a follow-up to our discussion, and I will keep you informed. Finally, our barge island, or finally, our island's five contractors are raising an alarm over the expected closure of our barge service from Savannah area, resulting in a sale from the barge site Hudson's Island. The particular service transports building materials to DeFuski and the county-funded public waste service, and its closure will deal a major blow to the industrial services of DeFuski, and of course, the community itself. The DeFuski Council will be conducting conversations with the Savannah barge owner, our local builders, and other solutions to brainstorm this problem. The closure of the services will be, well, could happen immediately, the next month or in the next few months, but when it does, we expect a devastating impact on our island. I will stay in touch and keep you all informed. As always, thank you for our consideration for the issues impacting the DeFuski community.
Thank you, sir. Rose Ewing.
Hello. My name is Rose Ewing. As of last month, I have lived on Ladies Island for twenty-five years. I have never addressed council before. Respectfully, I am here because I feel a lack of forethought by council is putting citizens at risk, especially those of us who love living north of the Broad. I am asking you to consider a moratorium on residential and commercial development. I have whitlist a lot of changes in the past twenty-five years, but I have never seen what I am seeing now. Residential developments are being built without regard to how residents will safely ingress and egress the communities. For example, Camellia Banks on Ladies Island has gorgeous homes. How do those residents safely exit that community without driving over three lanes of oncoming traffic, traveling at forty-five miles per hour? It is not if an accident will happen, it's when. Thousands of new apartments and single-family homes are being built off of Salem Road, yet the road remains a two-lane road with no shoulder. Commercial developments are being approved without regard to where they best fit safely into the community. A Starbucks is scheduled to be built across from the Food Lion on Sea Island Parkway. At the current Starbucks location on Boundary Street, cars routinely back up into the street, trying to squeeze into the tiny inadequate parking lot. If this happens on Sea Island Parkway, it will create another safe area, another unsafe area. I am asking you to make one hundred percent certain before any more construction is permitted that you take into consideration whether the existing infrastructure, such as roads, turn lanes, signage, traffic lights, and existing bridges can accommodate an influx of additional trips per day from these businesses and housing developments. How will you respond if one of the bridges goes out of commission again? I see police cars everywhere, but do law enforcement and first responders have increases in their budget to keep up with increased calls? It's your number-one responsibility as elected officials to ensure our community north of the Broad is safe, and the large amount of development projects you are permitting does not put citizens' lives at risk. As the iconic song says, "You're paving paradise to put up a parking lot," and I believe you are all making us unsafe as a result.
Thank you. Erin Quinn. Good evening.
Hi. So hello, councilmembers, good evening. I am Erin Quinn. I am here as an eight-year member of the DeFuski community. I'm a mother of two students of Buford County, and I'm president of the DeFuski Island PTO, as well as the administrator at the fire station on DeFuski, and I have a master's in public health. And so, all these things brought me here today for you. So my objective today is for you to ensure that you have a general understanding of the project that I'll refer to as the DeFuski Island Community Health Building. Numerous people have put efforts into this, and the plans are really vast, and the impact on our small community will have on our residents and guests is quite, quite important for us. As Cade mentioned, DeFuski Island was one of the three locations in Buford County that ARPA money was awarded to for the purposes of a multi-use community center, as well as that public health component. Unfortunately, the building site chosen by county officials is currently stuck in legal, and the clock is ticking very loudly, and we hear it, making necessary timelines, really trying to retain the ARPA funds. We look forward to conversations with you to review those other locations that we're kind of thinking might be useful for both short and long-term solutions. Our need is critical. So the 2020 census puts our population about five hundred and sixty-nine. What you don't see in those numbers is the hundreds of people that are part-time residents, the thousands of people that come and visit us as visitors, as guests, whether they're overnight or day trippers. So what we see, first and foremost, in this community building is slated to house that medical clinic, staffed by volunteers in medicine, as well as Main Street Medical. Many times, our residents forego medical visits due to the challenges of transportation across the water. We are protective of our underserved neighbors, and we really want to make sure they're cared well for, and the visitors on our island on holiday, they often do need medical attention as well. So at times, these people come to our services at the fire station for EMS as well, and on the mainland, what you would do is pop over the pharmacy for something over the counter, maybe go to urgent care, and if really needed, you pop over to the emergency room. We don't really have those options as easily as you do on the mainland. So the medical component is really appropriate to effectively meet our needs for these growing needs that we have, and to have routine preventative regular checkups, as well as those acute injuries and ailments that our people are having. Additionally, our historic district mailboxes, we are too few on that. We have a growing population. Currently, there's a waiting list for people to get their personal mail, and so there's conversations with Nancy Mace's office, helping get USPS facilities onto the island and help with those building efforts as well. Under your leadership, you're moving forward with the Parks and Master Plan, growth in library services, and these are promises to the residents, to have them have spaces to learn that are safe and they can grow. St. Helena and Garden City are actively building with their ARPA-funded community buildings, and it's not in danger of losing because of the building sites. Please help us support this project so that we don't miss out on this vital opportunity that will impact the quality of life for our entire generations to come, and with your support to consider different locations, we can make the ARPA deadlines and maximize the landmark building on DeFuski. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Carrie Major.
Good evening to council.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. Again, I'm Carrie Major. I am a youth and community advocate, and I was glad to hear you talk about the Island Rec Center, and especially about the parents who are working, which was your concern, and the children has nowhere to go. Well, on St. Helena Island, we have the same issue. Mr. Brown did, on April twenty-ninth, he showed a graph, a PowerPoint presentation, and in that presentation, he had in the center, quality of life. Listed from there, he had transportation, economic development, tourism, housing, the military utilities, the environment, he had trash and recycling, safety and security, education, and healthcare, and recreation. And his words were, if one of these pieces of the pie was missing, then their quality of life would be disturbed. So on St. Helena Island, we don't have recreation, St. Helena nor Ladies Island, so we're looking at our quality of life and hoping that through the master plan, it may be a temporary fix for us, but long-term, we're hoping that we will get a state-of-the-art community and youth center on St. Helena Island, and I know you continue to hear me, but I pray that you will hear me, and please do something for us on St. Helena Island, and we're looking forward to that. And I thank you, and I'm here for the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well stated. Okay, we have an executive session that we're going to go into now pursuant to South Carolina Code, Section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two. We're going to discuss receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice relates to matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, and we're going to talk about FOIA. And secondly, it's discussion of matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, where inquiries and investigations pursuant to South Carolina Code, Section four dash nine dash six sixty HSB. May I have such a motion, please?
I'll make.
Mr. Bartholomew made the motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Tabernick made the second, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, unanimously, we are going to go into executive session. There may or may not be matters out of executive session, and I'm not quite sure how long we will be there. It may be as long as forty-five minutes. We are in executive session. We are in executive session.
We're back from executive session because we are going to go back into executive session and we have to come out to vote to extend our meeting. And our meeting will be extended to a time certain. Our meeting will go now from 7:42 to 8:30. We will come out at 8:30 to adjourn the meeting. So do I need a vote to go back into executive session?
Well, we need a vote to extend first.
All right, I need the motion to extend.
Motion to extend at 8:30.
I'll second it.
I will vote now.
That's fine.
You just had to be controversial.
Okay.
And then I would suggest the motion to go back in for the purposes.
Yeah, and I will do that. All right, so we have a motion and second on the floor to extend the meeting until 8:30 p.m. Okay, is... Hold on a second. Have they come back on yet?
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
They're on there.
Okay. All right, fine. Who will object to that? One. Anybody else object?
York will.
He's not there, so he's not objecting.
He's there, Gerald's not there.
Oh, Gerald's not there. Sorry, York, I didn't see you.
You're on mute.
Okay, we didn't hear what you said.
Objecting, no.
You're not objecting?
No.
Okay.
Yes, I'm not.
All right, so now I need a motion to go into executive session. We have made the motion pass. So it's Mr. Bartholmew, Ms. Howard. And the reason is to go back in to discuss...
Receipt of legal advice.
Yeah, receipt of legal advice pursuant to 30-478-2, matters covered by the attorney-client privilege inquiries and investigations pursuant to South Carolina Code, Section 4-9-660 HSB. Any objection? Seeing none, we're in executive session again.
I'm not a senator. Continue tomorrow.
Continue tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, we have returned from executive session. As a result of the executive session, there are no matters arising out of executive session. There being no further action, this meeting is now adjourned at 8:30 PM. (knock on door)